Planning Commission, good evening, everyone. Commissioners, I'm going to change up the schedule, the agenda a bit. And we are going to hear the open hearing for the petition for Bruce Bodler at the end. So we'll go ahead and we will hear the other two public hearings ahead of that. And I also would like to, have we had a chance to review the minutes from September's commission If you've had an opportunity to-
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, I'm, let's do a roll call first, I'm sorry. We'll go ahead and we'll do a roll call for Commissioner members. We will start with Commissioner Jay Lutz.
Here.
Commissioner Andrew Clunner.
Here.
Commissioner Brad Lindberg. Commissioner Jana Norman.
Here.
Commissioner Aaron Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Karim Salas Ramirez. Is Commissioner Rita, has she logged into the Zoom meeting?
She tried and was not able to.
Okay, okay, so we'll wait on her, okay. So then we'll go ahead and we'll look at the minutes from last month's meeting. If everyone has had an opportunity to review those, do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion's been made by Commissioner Lutz, seconded by Commissioner Clunner. I'll go ahead and I'll do a roll call for vote. Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
Commissioner Clunner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Norman?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez? With a unanimous decision of aye, motion carries. Okay, so we'll start out tonight's meeting with our first open public hearing to consider a petition from Nicholas Yourhart at 4006 West Oakland Avenue for a variance from City Section Code 11.01, limited the total aggregate area of all accessory structures for properties over one acre in R1 Residential District. Holly, do you want to take, start that?
Yes, it looks like Commissioner Shrock was able to join us.
Okay.
So as noted, the petitioner is Nicholas Yourhart, 4006 Oakland Avenue West, Austin, Minnesota. He owns a parcel that is owned R1 Single Family Residential. Somebody on the Zoom call needs to mute, I think.
Did everyone mute?
Yeah, I can. Okay, hang on. I'll get in there. Ah, let's see. I think we're, okay. Okay, the surrounding zoning actually is our, there's one error in there, so R1 Residential. Actually, no, that's correct. To the south, there is Light Industrial. Forgot my mouse, so I'm kind of slow here. The petitioner is requesting an 800 square foot variance from our city code section 11.01, subdivision 1, limiting the total aggregate area of all accessory structures to 1,584 square feet for parcels exceeding one acre. The variance request is for the construction of a 2,400 square foot shed in addition to an existing shed, existing detached accessory structure. The property in question is approximately 3.4 acres. It's unusually large for the city of Austin. Our minimum lot size requirement is 6,000 square feet. With this proposed 2,400 square foot addition, the total lot coverage with structures, including the residence, would be approximately 4%. We do allow up to 40% lot coverage. The square footage of the existing dwellings and the proposed shed are noted below on your materials. The total would be 6,112 square feet. The Planning Commission, oops, and City Council. Let's see, we've got someone else coming in here. Need to address the following statutory requirements for granting a variance. One, you should consider whether the variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning code, that the variance is consistent with the comprehensive plan, that the applicant has established that there are practical difficulties in complying with the provision, and that the property owner poses to use, proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the provision. That would include that the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. The variance will not permit any use that is not allowed in the zoning district where the affected land is located, and that the variance will not alter the essential character of the surrounding area. And, let's see, I'm going to bring up the GIS map here for a minute. Is it the Yourhart?
Yeah, it's not, if you're showing.
Oh, it's not showing up?
It's not up on the screen yet.
Hold on, here we go, hang on. All right, so in the past, we have gotten some complaints about some of the outdoor storage at this particular location. And so that was a little bit of a driver for this particular request. You know, being a more rural property, again, the parcel's quite large compared to what we would normally see as a city lot, you know, with accessory structures. Do you have any questions in addition to what I presented to you so far?
Did we get any feedback from neighbors for the mailing?
Um, this went to four neighbors. Let me double check. And no, we did not get any calls from any of the neighbors.
I drove out and looked at the property and, in the aerial photo that's in the packet, he's placing the building, if that's where he's putting it, is behind the existing fairly large accessory building that's already there. It's tucked in the back of the lot there, kind of out of sight, so it's aesthetically, I don't think it takes away from the character of the area. My own personal preference as a neighbor would be, I'd rather see that building than all the junk that's piled around all over the place. I'd rather see all that stuff inside the building than out on the lot, so I didn't think from that standpoint it was an issue. My concern was, same as Andy's, whether or not any of the neighbors had responded.
Yeah, I should be able to get that pulled up here. Yeah, this is where-
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, this is showing the location, but this is flipped from, the north is on the, that's just flipped, so the south is on the top.
Is there a neighbor on the north side of this new proposed building that has any issues?
Uh, it's just Field, actually.
Yeah, the north side's just open, empty land.
Yeah, it's agricultural to the north, there's some residences.
Yeah, I don't see any issue with this. I think it'd say, you won't even see it from the road.
No, the only place you see it, Brad, is from the west, that gravel road on the west side there.
Yeah, there's some residences across the street, but I'm guessing those are probably the same people that, I'm not, I don't know, anonymous, we always do anonymous, but if people are complaining, you know, I'm thinking it's more about what's outside than what would be inside. I've not had any complaints about the structure on the parcel. It's more the, you know, the motor vehicles, some recreational vehicles. Not always the ones in the back, but more in the front, if he tempor, he has temporarily stored some in the front that got noticed and complaints. So I think his, his hope is to keep some of those things inside. I think it's in a good spot, behind the other building. I drove past it also, so I think, I mean, looking at it, I mean, it's probably in the best spot that it could be, and hopeful that he would keep some of his items in there, maybe that others had complained about in the past. So I wouldn't see a problem with it.
And the surrounding properties, zoned residential and light industrial, is that because they were annexed in?
Yeah, this, this area was annexed in, I don't know, within the last 10 years, maybe less. Actually, it might be the last-
The idea-
Six or seven.
Okay. The idea is that those would be rezoned agricultural or light industrial, whatever's appropriate for the use.
Well, I think, you know-
In conformance with-
I don't know all the county-
Let me see.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. I was going to say, in conformance with the, the, the plan, the comprehensive plan.
Our comprehensive plan, it's, it's residential, R1 residential in that area, single family.
Will it stay that way, is my question?
Would it stay that way? More than likely, yes, there are a lot of residences in that area. I mean, it could potentially be subdivided to create more parcels and maybe more housing if that, you know, became, you know, if that was an area of interest to maybe a developer. Um, the issue for the annexation was that there were failing septic systems in that area, and some of the property owners were not able to replace their septic systems. And so it was either, you know, annex into the city and get city sewer, or actually, I think we just finished the project out there to bring sewers, sewer to them. But yeah, I mean, initially, when the property was in the county, I believe the county has kind of an, like, has a minimum that's larger than what the city would require. So some of these parcels, I think, are larger, I believe are larger because they are required to be when they're, when they're first developed as single-family residences in townships
Does anybody else have any other questions?
Is there a recommendation, Holly?
Yes, this, all of the items tonight are recommendations to council.
I will make a motion to recommend to council to approve the request for the 2,400 square foot building addition, accessory building.
I would second that.
Okay. A motion has been made by Commissioner Lutz and seconded by Commissioner Lindberg to recommend to council the approval of the 24 square foot shed at 4,006 West Oakland Avenue. We'll go ahead and take a roll vote, starting with Commissioner Lutz.
Aye.
Commissioner Clunner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Norman?
Aye.
Commissioner Shrock? Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez? Okay, so with a unanimous decision of aye, motion carries. Next on our agenda is an open public hearing to consider a petition from Mill on Main LLC at 704 First Drive Northwest for a variance from city code sections 11.70 subdivision 1 off-street parking requirements and 11.41 subdivision 5 height limitations in a B2 district. Holly, can you give us a background on that?
Yes, there are essentially two items here, we'll deal with them separately, although they overlap, it's, they're both referencing the same project. The petitioners are proposing a project at the former YMCA site at 704 First Drive Northwest. That would be a new 92-unit apartment project. The property proposes to have 153 parking stalls, which is 54 less than what we currently require, 207, which is 2.25 spaces for each dwelling unit. The petitioner proposes 1.66 spaces per dwelling unit, and it's, in the future, we've had a lot of these appeals with regard to multifamily housing, and we are proposing in our future code update to, to require 1.5 spacers per dwelling unit. We just have not gotten to the point of adopting anything new yet. Okay, so our current ordinance does allow parking appeal, parking appeals to the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment and Appeals, which is the city council. The proposed parking would be 74% of what's currently required. We have, I have some additional documents that have been provided by the project proposer, the developer. I see that they have a couple of representatives here on our Zoom call as well, if there are any questions. Just as in the last item, the council should consider whether the variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning code, that is consistent with our comprehensive plan, that the applicant has established that there are practical difficulties in complying with the provision, and that the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the provision, that it's not due to circumstances, or it's due to circumstances unique to the property. The variance will not permit any use that is not allowed where they, in the district where the affected land is located, and will not alter the essential character of the surrounding area. Just going to go to pull up some more information here.
I have a question for the project representatives.
Okay.
Are they here tonight, or is he online, or?
Yeah, I'm not sure who, they have two people, why don't you go ahead and ask, ask the question?
This is, this is the former YMCA property, so when it was the Y, there was a second parking lot area across the street. Was that property not part of the sale in this?
It, it is part of the deal, sorry, I'll hop in here, Holly. However, we want this project to stand on its own so that we have flexibility for a future phase at that location. So we're just, just making sure that we do it right from the beginning here. In our experience, and pretty much any project that we do recently, we've been at 1.5 or a little lower than 1.5 parking spaces per unit. The reality is, in a lot of these buildings now, compared to when these parking requirements were written, back then apartments consisted of a lot more two-bedroom type units, even three-bed, and the reality is today is the greatest count of units is in the studio and one-bed units, which are typically a one, maybe a one-and-a-half car type unit. And then you have about 25% or so of two-bed type units, that might be two-car type units. So our experience, when we're above like, or right around a 1.5 parking ratio, we have more than enough parking fronts on one specific site.
Can you, can you give us your name as well?
Oh, sorry, Nathan Stensel, developer.
Thank you.
So for now, that property is just going to be kept the way it is with the asphalt on it and the parking that's there?
Yep, so we will use it for, for overflow parking in hopes of doing a future Phase Two type project on that site.
Are you, are you proposing, Nathan, to develop the property with, with another building?
Yeah, we sure hope so. That would be the goal, the long-term goal for the site. And I believe in our agreement, which we may have to modify, Holly, is, or I guess everybody, is the fact that there is a timeline on the development of the property. So in the event that we do not move forward with, with the development of it, I believe it reads that the property would go back to the Port Authority. I'd have to, I don't have that in front of me, but our ultimate goal here is to complete this project, have it be successful, and move forward with another building complementing it across the street.
Okay, thank you.
Do any commissioners have any other questions? It is a recommendation to council.
Does anybody want to see the site online? I can pull it up.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, I'll see if I can. Let's see. All right, not sure why it's blue, but, okay. All right, I'm kind of hovering over it right now. Is that it? Okay. So this is the existing YMCA here now, and this is the parking across the street, and this is the parking to the south. And then we do have some, we do have some building plans included in your packet as well, if you had a chance to look at those.
Well, if we don't have any other questions, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
I would second that.
Um, can you give me a little more detail? So is this a motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve the variance from the required 207 parking spaces to 100 and, can't quite see it there.
153.
153.
153.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lindberg, is that what you are also secondating?
Yes, I am.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to recommend approval of a variance from the required 207 parking spaces to 153 parking spaces, taking into consideration the unique characteristics of the property, consistency with a comprehensive plan. We'll go ahead and we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Lutz.
Aye.
Commissioner Clunner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Norman?
I'll have to abstain.
Commissioner Shrock? Commissioner Stewart? Commissioner Salas Ramirez? With a majority vote of aye, motion carries. And then we want to discuss the second portion of, of their hearing.
Yes, so this piece will, will address the, the height variance request. The property is zoned B2, it's, or, yeah, B2, I'm not sure why I have single-family residence on here, but that's community business. To the north is multifamily residential and commercial, both R2 and B2 districts. To the south is commercial B3 district, which is our downtown business district. To the east is the Mill Pond and past the Mill Pond Industrial, and then to the west is multifamily residential, R2 district. The petitioner has requested a variance, limiting the maximum height, from our ordinance, limiting the maximum height in a B2 district to three stories or 45 feet. So yeah, it's interesting that there's different kinds of zoning in that area, and yet we still have, we have a five-story, we have two four-story buildings right next to that existing Y, and then an eight-story building, just one building up from that as well. So this project proposes a five-story building, including a partially buried lower-level parking garage that walks out to the east. The proposed height is 45 feet from the first floor on the west and 55 feet 8 inches from the lower level on the east. The, again, the neighboring R2 districts to the west and north would allow a height up to 80 feet for a similar-sized lot. The lot is approximately two acres, and the proposed zoning code update would allow the same heights in B2 as in R2 to facilitate apartments and multifamily projects. The two closest neighbors are the Cedars, and I think it's, I think it's called, well, they're condos, it's like Austin Lane Condos or something like, I think. Yeah, Austin Lanes. Yeah, Austin Lanes, thank you. So the same criteria applies in this instance as the other two previous, that the variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning code, consistent with the comprehensive plan, that the applicant has established that there are practical difficulties in complying, and that the plight, that the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique of the, to the property, not created by the landowner, that the variance will not permit any use that is not allowed in the zoning district where the affected land is located, and that the variance will not alter the essential character of the So there were civil plans again included with this packet. Do you have any questions? difficulties in complying, and that the plight, that the plight of the landowners due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner, that the variance will not permit any use that is not allowed in the zoning district where the affected land is located, and that the variance will not alter the essential character of the surrounding area. So there were civil plans again included with this packet. Do you have any questions?
With all the variation between the building heights in the local area, can you comment on directionally what we're trying to get to in terms of building height?
In terms of, can you say that again?
With all the variation in building heights that we see in that local area, which direction are we trying to go in with approving taller buildings or shorter buildings?
In our zoning code update, we are going taller. Higher density is generally more valued with regard to infrastructure. In that area, there are existing multifamily or multi-unit structures, so we expect them to stay, we want them to stay. So this particular project would not be out of place with the existing projects.
Great, thank you, that answers my question.
Yeah, I don't recall that we addressed.
Do we have a street view of this property?
Yeah, it's, here, I'll pull it up again. It's the old YMCA. It's the same property that we just talked about, it's just that this is a separate issue, the height versus.
Yeah, Holly, my question goes to, do we have a proposed view of the new building?
Oh, the, yeah, there were some items, no, we don't, no, we don't have a drawing.
We don't have a street view of this proposed building?
No, we don't.
But my understanding would be the west side would meet the current height, but the east side is the one that's in question.
Right.
Right.
The east side would be about 10 feet higher.
Right.
Almost 12, 10, almost 11 feet higher than what's, what the maximum height is allowed.
And is it actually higher, or is it just because the property drops off on that side?
I'm not sure, maybe.
I think it slopes.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Do you, do any of the?
So, I don't, I'm just going to hop in here, Nate Stensel again, and maybe Trevor or Zach if I'm wrong in this, but, so it's a walkout towards the east, meaning it starts at grade on First Avenue, and then everything goes down towards Main Street. So the, when you look at it from Main Street, the first level would be the underground parking garage and pretty fully exposed, and then you'd have four stories of wood frame construction above that, which puts you at about 50, or 53 feet or so. But from the front side, the parking structure is underground, and then you have four levels of framing, which puts you under the restricted height. So it's really just a function of, you know, the way the lot lays and designing, it has a walkout with the underground parking being fully exposed to the east and not exposed to the west, which is really the main reason for needing that variance.
Okay, thank you.
So Nathan, the underground is a misnomer, it's above ground actually.
Well, it's about, so I think in, I don't know how your guys' is written, but probably playing it a little safe here, but in some communities, they define a level as, so if the parking garage was, say, 50%, a total of 50% of it was below grade, it wouldn't be classified as a story. In this case, I believe that greater than 50% of our lower-level parking is exposed, which would classify it as a level. So again, from Main Street side, it would appear to be a five-story building. From the First Avenue side, First Drive side, it is a four-story building. So the answer to your question is about half of it is underground parking, the other half is exposed due to the elevation drop in the lot from west to east.
Thank you.
Yep.
If we do not, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the height variance for this building.
A motion's been made by Commissioner Lindberg and seconded by Commissioner Clunnon to approve the height variance of the proposed building. We'll go ahead and we'll take a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Lutz.
Aye.
Commissioner Clunnor.
Aye.
Commissioner Lindberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Norman.
I'll have to abstain.
Commissioner Schrock.
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart.
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez. With a majority vote of aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you, if your matter's already completed, you don't have to stay and watch the rest of the meeting, although you're welcome to if you'd like.
Okay. So our last agenda item is the public hearing. Getting to that. To consider a petition from Bruce Bodler to approve a rezone of his property at 1404 Street Northwest from an R1 residential district to a combination of B2 community business district and an RO multifamily resident office district to accommodate development. Holly, if you'd like to get us started.
Yeah. So as noted, this property is owned by Bruce Bodler and his wife from Phoenix, Arizona. The location of the property is 1404 Street Northeast. The petitioner again is requesting to rezone the property. It consists of two parcels, parcel A and B are currently zoned R1 single-family. The petitioner wishes to rezone parcel A to RO residential office and parcel B to B2 community business. And the future land use plan is proposed to be amended from residential low density to mixed use. The present land use, there is no use right now, the house is vacant and somewhat dilapidated. The surrounding uses to the south and the east are R1 single-family residential districts, and the north and west, there's, is B2 commercial. The reason for this request is that the petitioner wishes to accommodate redevelopment of the property. The, I'll talk about the parcel A first, which is proposed to be rezoned to RO multifamily. Permitted uses in the RO multifamily office district are anything permitted in the R1 and R2 districts, which is basically single-family and multifamily. Also, the cultural colleges and academic instruction, mortuary, funeral home with some restrictions, offices, business or professional offices, studios, art, television, radio, music, and dance, or conservatories, clubs, fraternities, lodges, and meeting places for other organizations, but does not include like a retail-type establishment. Antennas and towers, these have been changed in our upcoming ordinance, but for the meantime, that's still allowed. Conditional uses would allow hotels, motels, tourist homes, bed and breakfasts. Just keep in mind that in an R2, or an RO district, the, well, actually, let me go Other conditional uses are research facilities, home occupations, again, antennas and towers, normal accessory structures to primary structure, services if they're located within the building, like a hotel, for instance, the service would not be able to be on its own, it would have to be part of the hotel. And then for parcel B, community business district, general permitted uses would be small retail establishments, under 70,000 square feet, personal services and business services, post offices, restaurants, bakery, catering, minor fabrication, repair, like appliance repair shop, decorating shop, see what else, drive-in uses, banks, financial institutions, there are requirements for screening in those instances, home businesses, transient accommodations, just double-checking here, commercial recreation, golfing, swimming pools, skating rinks, animal hospitals, veterinary clinics, automotive is not allowed without Residential, anything that's allowed in the R1, R2, and RO districts. Conditional uses, we have some kind of dated language here, as in the others, modeling, limited manufacturing. These are again, conditional uses, automotive. And the businesses would be, take place wholly, conducted wholly within a completely enclosed building, except for certain sales would require non-objectionable uses, nothing that would have any kind of nuisance impact, and then would allow new merchandise under certain And then this just has the setback requirements, the maximum lot coverage in a B2 district is, well, we require 20% open space, I guess, is the controlling factor there. The Planning Commission and Council should consider the following, whether the, should consider the consistency of the proposed zoning with the goals, policies, and future land use map of the comprehensive plan. In this instance, the comprehensive plan would be amended from low-density, suburban low-density residential neighborhood to mixed use. The definition for suburban low-density is, identifies housing with densities that generally range from two to four units per acre, would be predominantly single-family with the potential for some twin homes and other low-density detached, or attached homes, two to five units per acre. The mixed use would be identifying areas intended to provide a mix of commercial, office, residential, public, institutional-related uses in a walkable human-scale environment. Areas may include a mix of retail and service, commercial, office lodging, public, institutional, higher-density residential, park, and recreational uses. Mix of uses can be integrated either vertically or horizontally. Mixed-use areas are currently found in downtown Austin as well as within the 18th Avenue corridor. The, back to the other considerations for rezoning, the compatible, you should consider the compatibility of the site with the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district. The compatibility, whoops, too far. The compatibility of all the potential uses allowed in the proposed zoning district with the surrounding uses and zoning in terms of land suitability, impacts on the environment, density, nature of use, and traffic impacts, aesthetics, infrastructure, and potential influence on property values, the capacity of existing infrastructure and services sufficient to accommodate the uses permitted in the requested district without compromising the health, safety, and welfare of the residents. Whether the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district will cause detrimental environmental impacts, including but not limited to excessive stormwater runoff, water pollution, air pollution, noise pollution, excessive nighttime lighting, or other environmental harm. The boundaries of the requested zoning district are sufficient to meet the dimensional regulations for the proposed zoning district, the ability of the applicant to satisfy any requirements applicable to the specific use imposed pursuant to zoning and land use regulation. I actually didn't have anything additional attached here, at least not from the comprehensive plan. That was just something that I just read out of the comp plan. This is the survey done by the property owner showing the, oh, here, hang on.
Yeah.
This was the survey done showing the split of the two parcels. This is the Hardee's property to the north, and the, just trying to pull it down, this is where the housing starts here to the south. And I can pull this up on, mapping here. Pretty close. There we go. Kind of put it in the middle here, whoops. All right. So just some additional information, we sent out notices to 55 properties. I specifically spoke to three individuals who are neighbors, very close neighbors. I spoke to Hanson Mosher, or Moser, Mosher, and Lindberg.
They got the meeting.
Oh, okay, okay. And then I understand that the, everybody here right now is here for this particular item, and did all, is there anybody who didn't get a notice? Okay, you did not get a notice?
No.
Oh, you got one, okay. So, one, two.
Yeah.
So about 14 or 15 people out of the list.
So about fourteen or fifteen people out of the list. It looks like, we miss and we're missing two, or that we're here earlier, okay. So just to kind of give you an idea of how many people have responded. The, uh, the earlier project we have, we didn't mention it, but forty-one notices went out to that, and I didn't get any responses on that one. Do you have any questions right now, or do you want to open it up?
Let's open it up for discussion.
Okay.
Hey, Holly, before we open it up, uh, I mean, to me, Holly, we went through that whole list of criteria that we have to look at for this issue. And the one that jumps out at me is the traffic impact, more than anything else in this particular issue. So I realize all these properties that surround this area are affected by this. But a lot of these properties have access on Second Street, Third Street, and Twelfth Place to get in and out of the neighborhood a different way. I'm particularly interested in hearing from the Mosher, Heigl, McEdward, and Smith properties because they actually live on Fourth Street, and their driveways are on Fourth Street, the only way they can get in and out of their homes by car is on Fourth Street, so those are the properties. I'm just speaking for myself, not the rest of the commissioners, but those are the properties I'm most interested in hearing from.
I should-
I just wanted to throw all that out there.
I should note, too, that there is an existing access to the property. But it was a single-family residence initially, or still is. So there wasn't a lot of traffic going in and out of there, other than the family, which would be similar to the other residences to the south. The, um, we do have an agreement that there won't be additional ingress egress to that lot.
Other than the one that's there.
Right, other than the one that's existing.
Is that the one that's even with, is it Thirteenth Avenue?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
And Holly, was that part of a traffic study, or what was the reasoning?
No, uh, but there have been lots of traffic studies, and that was something that our city engineer requested before we went ahead with the property split, so this was one parcel. And as part of the property split, that was a condition, uh, to approving it.
Okay.
And I should know, as well as some of the neighbors who've gotten notice, the, there are, um, there's a representative of the property owner here, Charlie Faver, who's a realtor, and, um, uh, an individual, I guess I can let you describe yourself, however you want.
Rob Steffes.
Okay, just, um, somebody who is working with Mr. Faver on project.
Okay. Yeah, let's hear from him first.
Okay.
If you'd like to go ahead and...
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Rob Steffes, I, uh, I represent, I guess, the the small property on the northeast corner, be the one that we're looking to rezone to the B two. So I would represent, um, the business that I intend to and propose to put in to that location, so the, the one you were speaking of originally was the other parcel, parcel A. And so I'm going to be speaking to parcel B, I guess that's... I just want to be clear on that, so. So, um, we're looking to, or proposing to bring in a Scooter's Coffee kiosk. And a kiosk is essentially a, a drive-through-only business, there would be no, you know, in, in-store seating of that nature. It's a fairly small structure, so it's six hundred square feet, uh, is the size of the structure. And again, it'll be, it'll be drive-through only, so. The business hours that we have typically for this type of business is around six AM to seven thirty PM. We do employ about fifteen people, we've got a manager, assistant manager, baristas, so a total of about fifteen at, uh, for this business. Scooter's Coffee is a, is a, is a Midwestern franchise that was started in Omaha, Nebraska, it's really got the strong Midwestern values, and that's what really, we, you know, I have a partner in this business that drew us to this, this type of, uh, this type of business, and so, they're really expanding in the Midwest, the upper Midwest, all the way down to Texas right now currently. Uh, we do have ten stores under our business umbrella currently, and so, so we've been very successful in, in managing and running this business. The type of products that they do sell are, you know, you're basically coffee, coffee-related products, espresso drinks, lattes, teas, fruits, smoothies. And then all of the food products are made from scratch in Omaha, Nebraska, and are essentially, include things like muffins, pastries, oatmeal, breakfast burritos, uh, breakfast sandwiches, I think you guys are familiar with the type of products, but no, no, no food products are prepared, you know, in, inside the facility there, so. So that, that, that's the business, uh, you know, their brand promise is amazing people, amazing drinks, served amazingly fast. And, uh, you know, we do want to be cognizant of, of being a good neighbor. Uh, we'll definitely work with neighbors and work with the city and be cooperative on any, anything needed to, uh, for any minimum requirements. Those types of things, I know trees are always important. There are some, some very large trees there, I, I would expect that they would need to be reviewed and to make sure that they're healthy, and typically, trees of that age, you know, start to become to the end of their life and could be, you know, could potentially, um, be hazardous, but, uh, certainly welcome, uh, I, I truly enjoy lots of landscaping trees and things like that, uh, and it's really a requirement of Scooter's Coffee, uh, from the corporate to make these, these, these buildings look extremely, you know, pleasing and from the road, and, and provide that, that type of vegetation, so. I do have some, some packets, you know, with some pictures of what the building would look like and how it would lay out in the property, if, if you guys would like to, to have those, or I would hand them out, so. If you guys are interested.
What was one of the things that you liked about this location?
You know, it's, it's, uh, it's really like being close to the rooftops, um, the, the homes. And that's, that's being on the south side of the interstate is what we like, and there's already some retail in the area at this exit to the interstate, and so, um, being, you know, having that access, uh, for, for people to, to drive up to the, the area and, and get to it quickly. And, and close to the rooftops, it, it does, you know, feel like other, other parts of the city can be, you know, there's, 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 you know, other places too, but that's, that's part of the reason, and, and there's already a, a pretty good traffic count on that road as well, so. It's a, it's a great means of getting from the south side of the interstate, or the majority of the rooftops are, to, you know, the other big-box retail area. And it seems like, I do have a friend that lives in, in Austin, and, and the interstate is used to, you know, a lot of cases, to get from point A to point B, to, to on and exit, the, the several different exits there, so it, it's, it's just a, a good, a good traffic location, but, but also close to rooftops, so that's, that's part of the reason that we're looking at this lot. And I, I do think it would be, you know, good to, uh, it, it's time to do something with the house that's, that's currently there, that's sitting empty, and um, we're here to do something with that, so.
Do you have a site drawing that shows where the ingress and egress would be to Fourth Street?
Yes, I do. Can I bring those up to you?
So we have a way to see those on the-
Hang on, let me see if I can, I'm not sure. I don't know if we can kick this off the Elmo, or, let's see. Oh, he couldn't, okay. It might not work with our Zoom setup. You might have to just walk it around.
Okay. I'll just hand a few out here.
Oh, maybe, Holly, I don't know.
So, so parcel B would have separate egress and ingress driveways from parcel A, is that what we're saying, Holly?
Thank you.
You mentioned the agreement earlier that there would only be the existing one?
Yeah, it wouldn't look like this, that it would just be the...
I can speak to that.
Okay.
A bit, because when, uh, city engineer raised the issue of controlling access to the site in order to make sure the traffic on Fourth Street was, was safe and acceptable after, after this development, what he said would make that work is if all access to both parcel A and parcel B to and from Fourth Street occurred directly across from the existing a- avenue. So right, essentially where the current driveway access is, but straight across to create, you know, a, a perpendicular or, or perfect, you know, intersection.
With Thirteenth Avenue.
With Thirteenth Avenue and Fourth Street. So what will have to happen is that the traffic pattern from parcel B will have to come down through parcel A to get to that, that access point in coming and going. And so there is a, there is a design drawing, perhaps those who are here have seen it, that sort of shows how that would, would, uh, work. Now, there is an accommodation of a right-turn-only exit point from parcel B on to Fourth Street. But that's exit-only, right-turn-only, again, to minimize the impact of the traffic.
The north side driveway, then?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, leaving from that location, so there's going to be no traffic stopping to turn in, or anyone waning on parcel B to turn left and travel south on Fourth Street, because that would create additional traffic bottlenecks. If it's all in and out directly across from the avenue, then that'll minimize those interactions or conflicts, because they'll be at a actual intersection. That's what city engineers' thoughts were behind limiting the access point primarily to parcel A.
So- Uh, let me ask a question when it comes to clientele, are, are you anticipating this to be local people that are going to, uh, come to your, uh, coffee shop? Or are we talking about people coming off of Interstate ninety to enjoy your, your coffee and, and, and assorted sandwiches and whatever?
Um, I would expect, uh, you know, seventy-five to eighty percent of the people to be, you know, from the local Austin, uh, market, and, uh, but just being close to the interstate, um, you know, I, I suppose we would get some traffic off of that as well, um, you know, just by nature of being, being adjacent to the interstate. But our, our target market is certainly, uh, the people that live and work within the city of, of Austin.
Um, thank you.
Are you considering any other locations besides this, or is this kind of the preferred?
Uh, this would definitely be our preferred location.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions, any commissioners have any other questions for him? Can we have Charlie come up and talk about the other portion?
Thank you.
That is before us.
Good evening, I'm Charlie Faver. And, uh, thank you for your time this evening. The, uh, as, as was brought forward to you, and the question that I heard asked about the access, the access to the property, the access to both parcels of the property would be on the access directly from Thirteenth, directly across from Thirteenth, bo- both parcels. The, the, uh, the parcel that is left, the, the balance of the property, we, we would consider, we are, we are considering the fact that we would probably end up developing that into maybe a small office building at the, at the intersection of that thirteenth entrance and, uh, Fourth Street. A one-story, uh, a, probably less than two thousand square foot, or two thousand square foot area of a, a building at that point. The balance of that would be, or the balance of the property, we would anticipate that we would develop that into a, uh, a group of townhomes. Probably six, maybe seven townhomes that could fit in there. And, uh, and they would be, uh, developed under a condominium style, or a, what they, what they call a, uh, common-interest community style. With, uh, starting with a single ownership, allowing them the ability to be either sold as an individual unit or rented as, uh, market-rate rental, rental units. I think that this, uh, this develops this piece of property in a very soft way as far as, uh, as impact to the neighbors, the, uh, the neighborhood basically would stay where it is, the residential neighborhood would stay residential. The, the northwest corner where Scooter's is going to be would, uh, would be the commercial, it's a very, a very compatible commercial, it's not something that, that, uh, that should create a lot of problem to anyone. Hours, not into the middle of the night or anything, the, uh, it, it certainly allows a transition from the commercial that is across the street, and the commercial Hardee's, and down, and allows us to, to create a buffer so that everybody is buffered in a manner that, uh, that would make a very easy transition in there. I guess that's, uh, do you have questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
Um, looking at kind of where you're, um, suggesting that the office building would be proposed, it looks like there's a storm sewer easement.
That is correct.
That's in that area, how would that be, is that something that a, a structure can be built there? Maybe this is more of a question for Holly, would there be issues or concerns with that?
Yes, that, I can, I can, I can speak to that, the, uh, the storm sewer leaves a strip of land in between there, and I, I believe it's forty, uh, there's, there's sixty-seven feet, minus ten feet, so fifty-seven feet, minus an eight-and-a-half-foot easement. So that, that brings it down to forty-eight-and-a-half feet of land. And then, when you have a setback, you leave, it leaves a strip of land in there that is a buildable area that is approximately forty-two feet wide, for, forty or forty-two feet wide, depending on the, uh, on the design of the building, of course, and, and of course, then we have to take into consideration parking. Parking can be done on top of that storm sewer area. We can't build buildings on top of the storm sewer area. And so, the- And so the the area where the storm sewer is is going to have to be parking and access. The strip of land that's in between will have to be what we would build and and that could be built into some townhouse or perhaps a small office building in that area. We we need to, we need to create a need for it. The need for the for for residential is definitely there. We can, we can handle that. But the the corner right on Fourth Street and and 13th Avenue really is not conducive to putting in residential. That should have a buffer. We have the buffer that that creates a good buffer from from the residential that's there, from the residential that we would put in there, from the commercial that is there, from the commercial across the street.
Thank you.
So for these townhomes, what would the traffic access be?
Well, we would, we would probably develop the Third Street and bring it up there. Third Street and and bring a loop of some sort up there that would that would tie into that access that is off the end of 13th Avenue that that would allow that to to be there without without creating a lot of traffic that would come through there, probably some one ways and so on.
Okay, thank you.
Do any other commissioners have any questions for Mr. Fawver?
Or maybe anyone in the audience?
Yep, or would anybody in the audience like to, do they have any questions? Do you have any questions?
Yeah. How many businesses are they going to put in that, I mean, not the coffee shop?
I'm sorry, again.
Yeah, we're not having, I mean, not the coffee shop, but what do you call, office buildings?
Office buildings.
How many?
You can give your name too.
Kelly Mosher. Yeah, how many, how many of those I can figure on putting in?
How many what?
Office buildings.
I'm I'm assuming that there would be not more than one. Could be two, could be two very small ones in there, depending on how that development might go, but I would say that it would, there's not room to put in, there probably is not room to put in more than one.
Oh, okay, though. But they've got, yeah, I just listened to all the things that can go under that. There could be anything, I mean, them office buildings, I mean, what, you know, what you had, there could be many things go in that building.
Right. Could go into an office building?
Right. You ran off a whole bunch of them.
Some of those were for the B2, which would be the other parcel.
Right, I mean, office has to be.
RO is different.
Yeah, it can't be retail. I mean, it wouldn't be able to be a retail property. It would be, yeah, it would have to be office. And then another thing to keep in mind is just there's some businesses that aren't going to build in such a small location, you know, in such a small building or, I mean, I could see, you know, people are always looking for places to do like, you know, hair, massage, or things like that, bakeries, but I guess that might be retail unless you're unless you're just baking and then, you know, having maybe internet orders or something. I don't know. I guess people can be creative, but.
I don't think you can put bakeries or things like that that are that are in in RO.
Yeah, not in, yeah, not in the RO, not in the RO as it as it is now.
But you could, but I believe that we could put in a beauty shop. That could, that could go in, something like that. It's a service.
Right, that could, yeah.
And that's covered underneath that. It's, it's pretty limited, actually, when you get down to it. It's, I think that what you, what you heard when Holly was speaking to it was mixing the B2 with the RO, and you got a lot of information there that that probably should have been delineated a little more carefully, but.
Yeah, I can go over it again if you want.
Yeah. So, any other questions? Me?
It just helps our commissioners on Zoom to hear.
Sure. If you could just say your name and. Yes, I'm Terri Stow, and actually, the back of my property has got the Grove, and I understand the way the survey is done there, it really would affect taking out a good portion of that. Is that correct, Charlie?
Well, oh, you mean the the Grove on this property?
Right.
Some of it would have to come out in order to build houses in there, but along the back, you you have the setbacks, so on the perimeter of it, probably not a lot taken out, probably just cleaned up so it looks better. But in the in there, you're going to have to create some building sites in order to to use it, no matter what it's built, no matter what is done with it. It's, yeah, that, yes.
Yeah, I understand that. I guess, you know, part of that concern is even when they put up the Hardee's there, the contractor worked really well with us, and they agreed to put up a very nice privacy fence between the business and our property, and we were very grateful for that accommodation. I guess that is a big concern because it is a good buffer right now, and the privacy is there, and once we start to get into commercial or townhomes or things like that, we'll have more traffic, for sure. So that that's a concern. And the other part of my question is, that Third Street, if they're thinking about using that as another alternative access, right now, that is so narrow. There is absolutely one-way traffic in and out, and we have to wait continuously for garbage trucks, recyclable trucks, any FedEx, anything right now. It's a very dangerous intersection because there is no room, so that would be a major concern for all of us in that area.
Yeah, that's why I've said, if that's developed that way, that it probably will have to be created into some one ways and or some one-way traffic, and it actually may even help that a little bit because it would give, one way or the other, it'll either give you an access in or an or an exit out that would would keep traffic going one way and probably not bottle it up quite as bad.
And the city would review any plans for subdivision, you know, prior to anything like that happening?
Yeah.
So infrastructure would obviously be a big, big factor in what could be designed or what could end up in that area.
Hi, Kyle Keenan, 310 12th Place. I have the same concern she has. That road, we live on the corner, and let me also say Jacob Vela, who lives in the house I live in, is also against this. The road is very narrow, very narrow, and we don't, we already have enough traffic from our neighborhood, and I share all the concerns that my neighbors have here. And I think we also need to think about the impact on the entire city. When you're talking about Fourth Street, it's not just about people backing out of their driveway, it's about all the people in the apartments down the road from me who don't have cars, who walk up to QuickTrip, so to get their groceries. And how much more traffic are we talking about so they don't get hit? Why hasn't Mr. Bodler sold the property as residential? What is the precedent for anything on the east side of Fourth Street being changed from residential to commercial? When is the last time that happened? Do you have those answers?
The, the Bodlers, the, oops, an echo here of some sort. The, the, the Bodlers, of course, kind of held that property closely through their family for many, many years. That was, that's, that's the, that's the last of the of the Bodler homestead, you know, up there. And why didn't, why wasn't it sold for residential through the years? Because there's no market for it as residential.
But there will be a market for townhouses?
As as townhouses, built as townhouses, and with a buffer on the Fourth Street side that's, it's easy, yes, I believe that townhouses will work back in there, in the back part of it, yes.
At whose expense?
What?
Or will our taxes go up at whose expense?
I'm.
The quality of life expense?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
It will cost us higher taxes and a quality of life standard, and it will be endangering pedestrians who are trying to get their groceries because they don't have cars, and they walk up to QuickTrip.
Yeah.
But interesting for the Bodlers. I'm necessarily, Mr. Bodler will not be affected by any of this, right? He lives in Phoenix, where is he?
Pardon?
Can you not hear?
Here.
No, it's okay.
I.
Everybody there?
Go ahead. If you, if either of you wanted to seat, be seated like the rest, you can. I have a microphone if you want to use it. There you go. You'll probably get feedback if you get close to that one.
And before, before we go too much farther, we were doing each individual until they were done, you know, so this last little bit was if someone had something specific to ask Charlie about the development, there's opportunities for each of you to also just come up and make your comments. And so I don't want to just get all jumbled so that this just goes on forever because there's no structure to it. I want Charlie, when he's done saying what he has to say, to have an opportunity to sit down so that someone else can then come up so that we can do this in a way that everyone, by the end of it, has said what they want to say, and it's not a back and forth, or, you know, it shouldn't devolve into some sort of argument or or a personal discussion about a family or a name or whatever. Let's try to keep it to the proposal that's at hand and whether that makes sense. So Charlie, I think, as far as I can tell, if you want to have a seat, and then it looks like, was it Mr. Stefis?
Yes.
If you want to come up and just make your comment briefly, maybe explain whatever's already been brought up from your perspective, and then we can get some of these neighbors to just make their their statements.
Yeah, I just, I did want to expand on on the comment that that Mr. Fawver talked about in in terms of of why it's not marketable as residential. And, you know, sometimes you, you know, I try to look at things in different lenses, and if if that were to to stay, you know, your traditional single-family residential area from the lens of looking at it from the future buyer, where the future buyer is now adjacent to some some retail and potentially some office, it just, that's the point where it doesn't make it marketable for for those buyers, and it doesn't make it marketable to make it residential for single-family homes. And so I think, I guess, in, you know, just offering my thoughts, I'm sure people can agree or disagree, but the proposal that Charlie's putting together does create a transitional space to get from, I understand the retail that, you know, even I'm bringing in, which is soft retail, but the but creating that transitional space where it is marketable to more of the buyers or or people that want to live in, you know, multifamily or townhomes, those types of things, does create that. And so, you know, that's, that's where I believe that it's a great plan to create that transitional area, and it does stop any future, you know, major retail, such as a very large gas station. It is on an exit of a of an interstate to where a large, you know, QuickTrips are getting bigger and bigger and bigger, QuickStars and those types of things, I'm sure you've seen that, to where they come in and create this big, bright, you know, fully developed retail area that that, you know, potentially down the road, if this property sits there longer and longer, it could, could, could be that. So that's another lens to look at it, is what what it could be down the road that could be even what I would say is is not a better picture of what we're looking at today. So just my thoughts, again, there's just different ways to look into things, and I'm just offering my opinion there. So, thank you.
I think this would be a good time to to open it up to the individuals that are in here today to be able to speak. So before you start, please give us your name and your address.
Chi Chi Mosher. My husband is Kelly, and we live at 1304, 1304 Fourth Street Northwest. Been there since January of 96, and our property is adjacent to that being considered for rezoning. We opposed the rezoning in 1999, 2018, and we do so again for the following reasons. There are many locations and empty buildings already zoned for commercial use available within Austin. Why not utilize these instead of cutting into residential property? Fourth Street Northwest often has heavy traffic, making it difficult for current residents to enter and exit their driveway. It's also difficult for those coming on to Fourth Street from 12th Place and 12th and 13th avenues. Due to almost constant traffic, customers driving to use QuickTrip, Hardee's, Burger King, or Subway already have difficulty entering or exiting these businesses. Adding more businesses would only increase the traffic flow and increase the problem. The former YMCA building is being developed into about 92 apartments. The shortest route for these people to shop at Hy-Vee, Walmart, Caribou Coffee, Runnings, Pizza Ranch, and other restaurants and stores in North Austin is to use Fourth Street Northwest. This will add considerable traffic to the street. Pedestrians are often seen crossing Fourth Street to do business on either side of the street. Crossing is dangerous now because the traffic, because of the traffic, and would become even more so with added businesses. And I think it was mentioned that the townhomes, these people would also be crossing Fourth Street. And then lastly, rezoning this area for commercial usage would lessen the value of our property as well as that of our neighbors. We hope that you will consider these reasons and others that are voiced by citizens who actually live in the neighborhood, and we invite you to come, visit our area, talk to the businesses, residents, and experience what we do as we come and go from our homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to hover right here. That's your property, right?
Pardon me?
This is your property up on the screen. If you can look, I got the arrow. Is this yours?
No, your arrow is on the coffee shop. Oh, the, your moving arrow, yes, that's ours.
Okay.
Hello, my name's Deborah Earl. I live at 1209 Fourth Street Northwest with my mom, Teresa Earl. I'm also opposed for a lot of the same reasons just mentioned, along with, the other thing I was going to bring up is, you know, when we're out even mowing our boulevard, we take our lives in our hands with the traffic that's out there now. I don't know how many times I've almost gotten hit by a, by a mirror from a car because they get so close, they don't pay attention, and it's so busy. I've helped little. they get so close, they don't pay attention, and it's so busy, I've helped little children try to get across the street, stop traffic, I always say, oh, they're not going to hit an old lady, so I sometimes just walk out in the middle of the street to stop them from, from just crossing, it's just so busy, and all this is going to just add more and more to what's already there, until, until maybe the traffic situation needs to be addressed before we add anything else onto that street, just thought, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
I was just looking, did I see someone raise a hand, or, okay, no, okay.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any other questions?
You know, Holly, has there been anything from the state of Minnesota, with the new bridge across Interstate 90, and any other traffic control going into place with that new interchange?
You're asking the wrong person, I am definitely not involved in that, there is, there was a, a particular design choice that council voted on, which would be a strong recommendation to MinDOT, although ultimately, I believe they, they can choose, but I, I don't know enough about how the design would work, to give you any really good information about that, I know that, overall, it was presented as better than the concurrent design, that all designs that were presented were, would work better with the traffic flow than what we currently have, but I can't tell you how, you know, I guess I can't tell you how much improvement there would be.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Would anyone like to make a motion, either for or against the rezon?
That would be a recommendation to council to approve or deny, and then it probably should be for each parcel, since they're two separate zoning designations.
So maybe we should focus on parcel A?
Yeah, I think that, do you, what do you think, Mr. Byram, would that be a good idea, just to do each parcel as its own motion, or?
Yeah, that would make some sense, because it's actually really two actions, the rezoning, the one parcel to an RO, and the other parcel to a B two.
I agree.
So, I think it just makes things cleaner to have two separate motions.
Yeah, it would just be a suggestion, just simply a motion to approve or deny the rezon from R1 to RO, or from R1 to B2.
And, and before you do that, I think it's important for me to just refer us back to the criteria, oftentimes, there, there's a, you know, political aspect to this, I guess, that, that because people came to speak their mind, that is the, the biggest and most important thing that we should think about, and so I'm not suggesting you should say yea or nay on this, but the criteria under the law, as far as what you should decide this issue based upon, you know, are in the backup material, and it, and it talks about how the proposed zoning classifications fit with the goals and policies and future land use, comprehensive plan, there's certainly criteria about the compatibility with, with the, with the proposed zoning district, and the uses that are in the surrounding areas, and issues about infrastructure, and services, and whether they're sufficient, whether there's going to be any detrimental impacts, so, just, just referring you back to the list of considerations, it would be good for any decision that you make to be based and grounded in that, and not in the fact that there were more votes no tonight in the audience, than maybe votes yes from the developer, I don't want you to get lost in that, and I don't want people to think that that's the basis for any decision, it should be based upon these criteria.
This is Commissioner Lutz, I'm going to echo what the city attorney just said, as far as the considerations, and for me, as I mentioned earlier, number three in the considerations includes traffic impacts, I still believe that's the biggest issue with this request, and because of that impact on traffic, and the issues that that area already has with congestion and traffic for the residents that live nearby, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion to recommend a council to deny the request, but I, before that, I would like to hear more discussion from the other commissioners, if I could, please.
Yeah, and I would echo that, Jay, and note that there's some environmental impacts as well, as far as noise pollution, that would be part of that, in the surrounding neighborhood.
I'm also prepared to deny the recommendation as well, for similar reasons, and lack of clarity of what would be proposed to go in that space, to accommodate all concerns.
J I completely agree with you, I think, I mean, Fourth Street, as crazy as it is, just to throw another business, or just more traffic there, would make it very difficult, or even more difficult than what it already currently is.
Any other feedback from the commissioners?
I'm in total agreement with Mr. Lutz, and number four, with compromising the health, safety, and welfare of the residents, I have concerns with that, with the traffic.
Okay, so, are you making a formal motion, Commissioner?
Is there any other comments from any other commissioners?
I concur with, with the other commissioners, that this is, the traffic is, is a big issue, number four, the health and welfare of the residents, I concur with that.
Yeah, if there's no further comments from the commissioners, I'm prepared to make a motion to recommend a council to deny the request for the rezoning, for me, for both parcels.
Hey, one second.
Okay, so we will focus on parcel A, so a motion has been made by Commissioner Lutz, and seconded by Commissioner Schrock, to recommend to deny rezon to council, we'll do a roll call vote, Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
Commissioner Clunner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Norman?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrock?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez?
Aye.
With the unanimous decision of aye, motion carries. So then we'll go ahead, and we will focus on parcel B, does anyone want to make a motion?
I think the motion was for both, wasn't it, Mr. Lutz?
Yeah, I was prepared to make it for both, yeah, you think we need two separate motions?
I thought that's what you said before, that you were prepared to, to say no to both.
I was.
The chair required, or requested that it be two.
Yeah, all right.
Do you want to go, do you want to make a motion?
Somebody else want to jump in here? If not, I'll also make a motion to recommend a council to deny the request for rezoning for parcel B as well.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, a motion has been made by Commissioner Lutz, and seconded by Commissioner Lindberg, to recommend to deny rezon for parcel B to council, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
Commissioner Clunner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindberg?
Aye.
Did we lose him?
It looks like, it looks like we lost.
Aye.
Oh, there he is.
Commissioner, thank you, that's okay, Commissioner Norman?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrock?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez?
Aye.
With the unanimous decision of aye, motion carries. If no one else has any other comments, we'll take a motion to adjourn?
Hold on just a second, just for everyone's benefit, that was a recommendation to the council, the council will consider that at their regular meeting on Monday at 5:30.
That's the 18th.
Yeah, Monday, the 18th of October at 5:30, so.
Meeting as well?
What's that, that's a, that's a public meeting as well?
It's actually not a public meeting, it's just a, no.
Okay.
Not public.
I mean, as far as, the public can attend, I mean.
The public can attend, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, it's open to the public, to attend.
And when is that?
Monday, the 18th at 5:30.
Same place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made to adjourn by Commissioner Lutz, and seconded by Jana Norman, we'll do a roll call vote, Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
Commissioner Clunner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Norman?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrock?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez?
Aye.
With the unanimous vote of aye, motion carries, meeting adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, thank you for your.